Good evening. I would like to call to order the November 15th, 2023 regular school committee meeting at 5:00 p.m. At this time, I will entertain a motion to convene in executive session. This is a non-public session to discuss the approval of the October 11th, 2023, and the October 18th, 2023 executive session minutes, and also collective bargaining pertaining to the TTA teachers.
So moved.
And ESPs.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Russo, second by Mrs. Bea Joni Smith, and all Mr. Parsons' had to vote?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Bea Joni Smith?
Aye.
And that she have votes aye as well for unanimous vote. The school committee will reconvene in open session after executive session, planning for 6:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thanks.
You have to do this?
Thank you. We reconvene our regular school committee meeting now at 6:02 PM. It's the November 15th, 2023 regular school committee meeting at this time. If we could all raise, rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. And our meeting announcement, the November 15th, 2023 regular school committee meeting will be televised and recorded. It may be viewed live on Comcast Channel 22 and Verizon Channel 34 or on youtube.com/tuxburytv. Under the open meeting law, the public is permitted to make an audio or video recording of an open session at a public meeting. At this time, I would ask if anyone is recording tonight's meeting to please identify themselves. Okay, and seeing no one, we will start with our recognitions. Mrs. Terry O'Regan, if you'd like to.
Sure. All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. The first of our recognitions tonight is Allison Loopy. Allison is our volleyball coach and former student volleyball alumni who continues to make Mr. Drew and the entire Tuxbury Memorial High School very proud. Mr. Drew, if you could come on up, talk a little bit about Ally.
Hey, that was, yeah, I made a show a month ago or so, and they were looking for a volleyball coach of the year, and hasn't anybody had a nomination, and I needed to put out a name. You know, to have a, thank you, have a former student athlete that's, that's a coach in our system, and she's a fantastic role model for our ladies, and the standard that she has set in our volleyball program is, is second to none, and, and she's just a fantastic leader, a fantastic role model. She, you know, has, has had some fantastic teams, and, and they, as soon as I submitted, they came right back and like, let's go, this is the perfect candidate for us, and, she's a fantastic leader, she's a fantastic role model. I, I think the world of her, I, when I go to our A D meetings, and I've said it before, there's a bunch of people that are, you know, I'll take your volleyball coach. No, you won't, you know, that kind of thing, and, you know, I, I think the world of Ally, I'm so happy for her, she's well-deserving. She was the MVC Coach of the Year last year, she was the Boston Globe Coach of the Year last year, and in, in 2023, she's the MIA volleyball Coach of the Year for the entire state, so, super proud, glad you guys had her, and a well-deserving recipient, Ally Loopy. Come on up, Loopy.
And we also have recognition on behalf of the school committee.
All right. So on behalf of the Tuxbury School Committee, I am honored to read this resolution of recognition. Whereas Allison Loopy is the head coach for the Tuxbury Memorial High School Girls Volleyball Team, and whereas Coach Loopy led the girls volleyball team to the 2022 MIA Division III State Championship, and whereas Coach Loopy was named Division III Boston Globe Girls Volleyball Coach of the Year, and whereas Coach Loopy has been chosen MIAA 2023 Girls Volleyball Coach of the Year, and whereas Allison Loopy has brought great pride, recognition, enthusiasm, and honor to herself, to her family, to Tuxbury Memorial High School, and to the town of Tuxbury. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Tuxbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the many achievements of Coach Allison Loopy.
Ally Loopy, if you wouldn't mind, we'd love to do a photo with you too when you're ready. Yeah, thank you. Nick, did you want to?
Yeah, sure.
If you would just face towards the camera over here. Yeah, Jason will get you on camera. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Drew, and we would love you in that photo, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you for coming out.
Very proud.
Thank you for getting Ally up first, they got a, their break up dinner tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
No problem, we understand when you have to step out. Okay, thank you. Mrs. Terry O'Regan?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The next of our recognitions is here on behalf of, or in the loving memory of Rosman Dorrance, and we all know her as Roz, so I'd like to just tell you a little bit about Roz, and then I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Garrish and her team to really glow about Roz's impact on Heathbrook School, but let me just say to the committee, Roz was, served over 37 years in education, 15 of them, she was here with Tuxbury, first, as I think the first, gifted and talented teacher for our gifted and talented student population, then she's served as a third grade teacher, and then the principal of the Heathbrook School, retiring from Tuxbury Public Schools in 2015. Roz was a consummate professional, amazing and graceful as a principal, she just had a wonderful way with everyone, adults and students alike, truly a calming spirit. So this is an appropriate gift made on her behalf, and a recognition of the spirit she shared with our students, past and now present. So if I can invite Principal Garrish and her team of teachers, and her team of retired teachers up to the podium to talk a little bit about this coming corner donation.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the committee, Mrs. Terry O'Regan, and Mrs. McDermott, Mr. Libby, and?
Rania.
Rania.
My job is to push the slides and stay out of the way this evening, which is sometimes what, what a good principal can do, is to let the fabulous people in the building do what they need to do. One of the things, I, I had the, the luxury and the privilege of meeting Roz, she was going this way as I was coming in the door, and so, but there are, there are still signs up at the Heathbrook that, that have her name on them, but I would like to introduce her daughters Erin and Liz are here with us this evening, along with some teachers and members of the Heathbrook Teaching Community, both present and past, and they'd like to talk to you a little bit about what, what they decided to do. I, we got a, I got a call from Mrs. Reagan and said Roz Dorrance's family would like to do something to, you know, in her honor at the, at the school, and I went, great, maybe they're going to donate a book for the library, or, or whatever. So I gave their sister Emily a call, and we, we had some conversations back and forth, and then conversations from the, from the family, and then with the teachers, coming together, what are things that kids need? Roz Dorrance did SEL before SEL was a thing. She, she took care of kids, she took care of teachers. The one thing that I heard over and over again from her daughters was that Roz loved children, and she loved teachers, and wanted to do everything that she could to support them. So I would like to introduce you to members of the Heathbrook Community, and I'm going to go see if I can put the slides on. Please.
We can do a quick little setup while the slides are being brought up on the screen, but thank you so much for that introduction. You said about half of which I was going to say, I'm Elizabeth, I'm my mom's oldest daughter, and then my sister Erin, my sister Emily is in Virginia, so she's not able to be here right now, but as you mentioned, my mom had a long tenured history. mentioned, my mom had a long tenured history within the school system, and then Heathbrook, where she eventually retired, and she, as was mentioned, loved her students, she loved her teachers. I think she embodied the, if you love what you do, you never work a day in your life. But one of the big things that my mom always spoke to us about was her desire to leave children in the classroom. So she never wanted to remove a child, she wanted them to learn, she never wanted to disrupt a classroom or a teacher, she wanted them to have that experience. So when we had, when Mom passed, we had an opportunity to kind of pay back to the system that gave my mother so much joy. So we wanted to be able to work with Heathbrook, where she spent her final years, and had so many memories and stories when she came home to talk about, and we wanted to give back to this community. So we went to the school, and they had this proposal of creating these calming corners that directly aligned with what my mom was so passionate about. So I don't feel comfortable going through these slides because it was really the work of these women, so I would love to hand it over to them, and they can kind of walk through all of the work that they did. Honestly, we are just writing a check and hoping to continue my mom's memory, but they did all of the work, so I would love to turn it over to them.
Thank you both for being here. This is really special.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie Hayward, I'm the school counselor at Heathbrook.
I'm Renee Langley, the first grade moderate special needs teacher at the Heathbrook.
Stacy Parity, kindergarten teacher.
Madam, Madam Chair, if I can just also recognize, we have our two teachers in the back who have been so impacted, not only by Roz's presence, but a continual presence at the Heathbrook. Is that correct, Ellen? Helen Matasak and Joanne Morrissey, thank you for coming tonight.
Welcome.
So, so the, the idea of a, a calming corner and a calm space is, can I ask you to push that button? There are only twice, Mr. Ratliff. So, when, when we get, when we get busy at work, and, and sometimes we, we're trying to do five things at once, and we're trying to get our, sometimes we just need to take a break, and we just need to just go, go sit down someplace, or go get a cool drink of water, or do something. Why can't kids do the same thing? One of the things that we noticed, that we, we want to provide opportunities, Mrs. Hayward is actually putting together a program to meet with, first teach all the teachers, and then go into all of the classrooms about what it means to open a calming corner in your classroom. Mrs. McDermott brought this, with, brought some research with this. Alex Hirschberg, who does a lot of work with our counselors across the district, is a proponent of this, and is bringing some of this new light. We know better now, we know that when we have kids in classes that are having, that are having a moment, that they don't need to leave for an hour, or for the day, or for whatever. Sometimes they just need a few minutes in a place to sit in a comfortable spot, or and maybe play with something, or use some fidgets, or do, or look at how many of the other things. Feel free to. The other thing that they can do as they start to look at pictures, they write, we read books, we do lots, we introduce the world of books, and we talk about, we learn through literature and books about the human condition, and kids are know, they know about being feeling peaceful, about feeling grumpy, and so, Mrs. Garr, if you want to bring some of those books in and share those with you. So all of our teachers, there were a number more, that when, we've got a whole, a whole slew of things that are, won't all go in the basket at once, because then the kids will be a little too excited. But the idea of having books, having fidgets, having places that are calm, having weighted animals, or weighted things to put in their lap, to hold, to have, address some of those sensory issues, to be able to just take a few moments and say, okay, I'm ready. And that's what Mrs. Hayward will do. What happened, how do you feel when you feel, you know, all of your feelings? I sound like Mr. Rogers for a moment. But then, what does that feel like? What does that look like? And then sometimes you can go and take a break. And then the last slide, we have, this is just a segment of the group of people who want to contribute in some way, and they wanted to do it in honor of Roz, they wanted to do it to help our kids, and we're so excited to be able to do this, and are so grateful for the, for the gift that you've created possible, and the collaborative effort. We were throwing all kinds of ideas around, and when somebody brought up the idea of the common corner, they said, oh, that's mom. And, and it clicked, and it, and it, then we started hearing more and more Roz stories. So we're incredibly grateful for the legacy that, that Roz has left, and then now taking that, and she, she could have written a book. I mean, she probably didn't, you know, she, she was, she was ahead of her time, and now we understand that the things that she knew instinctively are good for all kids, not just for the, just Dan, that we support the teachers, and by supporting the teachers and giving them what they need, then the kids get what they need, and then ultimately everybody grows, and everybody wins. Thank you very much.
And if you wouldn't mind just staying up here, we have a, a resolution recognition for you as well. Did you want to?
On behalf of the school committee, I want to offer this resolution of recognition. Whereas Mackenzie Hayward, Renee Langley, Jennifer Murphy, Stacy Parity, Marty Smolich, and Kathy Ventura are dedicated and enthusiastic educators at the Heathbrook School, and wish to implement common corners in all kindergarten and first grade classrooms, and whereas Roz Dorrance's daughters Emily Liz and Erin, Emily Liz and Erin Dorrance made a generous donation to the Heathbrook School to organize and implement the common corners, and whereas Principal Garrish and the staff graciously accepted the benevolent gift and kindness from the Dorrance sisters to organize and implement the common corners for the kindergarten and first grade classrooms, and whereas Mackenzie, Renee, Jennifer, Stacy, Marty, and Kathy have brought great pride, recognition, enthusiasm, and honor to themselves, their families, to the Heathbrook School, and to the town of Tuxbury. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Tuxbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the many efforts of Mackenzie Hayward, Renee Langley, Jennifer Murphy, Stacy Parity, Marty Smolich, and Kathy Ventura, and the goodwill of Emily Liz and Erin Dorrance. On behalf of the Tuxbury School Committee, thank you.
If the teachers wouldn't mind joining, just for a photo.
Yeah, let's get a photo.
That would be great. Yes, our retired teachers as well, please.
If you want to, I'm not here. Right in front of the podium, and then we'll get all of you. Come on up here, we'll get, just don't triple before, because that way we'll get you in front of the podium.
We have everybody.
Just side by side, Jason, you, you have to sit in the room.
We need Terry.
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Does anybody actually have a camera? Oh, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and at this time, for the committee, I will entertain a motion to move up item number 17A out of new business, where the Dorrance family has donated $4,000. This is before the committee for a vote.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So we've now moved that item out of new business, so we could now look at the vote to accept the donation, up to $4,000 from the Dorrance sisters. It is their motion.
I'd like to move to accept that donation as presented.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion by Mrs. B. Johnny Smith, a second by Mr. Russo. Mr. Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. B. Johnny Smith?
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well, for unanimous vote to accept this generous donation. Thank you so much. And just a couple of words, I can't even say just how special I think this is, that you guys have reached back out. I know I, my children also had some time with Mrs. Dorrance, and she was a fantastic lady, so, and it's great seeing some of our retired teachers and our present teachers here with us tonight. Thank you so much for joining us.
Yeah, thank you.
Mrs. Terry O'Regan?
All right. Well, our next recognition is a man who needs no introduction, but I'm going to give a little one anyways, and that is Mr. James Sullivan. He is being recognized and honored, and if it's okay, I think I'll call you Jimmy, is that okay? All right. We are recognizing and honoring Jimmy tonight for his leadership with our Tuxbury Memorial High School DECA team. On joining him tonight are our 2023 High School DECA Student Coordinators of the DECA Fashion Show, which is a fundraiser rating, raising much-needed funds to help cure cancer in the name of our own high school student, Megan McCarthy. Her mom, Lee McCarthy, is also with us tonight. But I just want to say, what really struck me, Jimmy, were how many alumni students? I mean, you had probably the most amount of students participating in a DECA show that I've ever seen, and I'm not going to get into that, because I think you guys are going to talk a little bit about all the details of last night, but what really struck me is how many alumni students come back for this event every year. And it's clear that the magic you create in the class towards their business goals, and their, you know, facilitating fundraising goals towards a worldwide issue, really is magic that just keeps giving and giving, and the spirit that Megan had for hope and miracles has truly touched our DECA students of present and past. And, and the fact that you now add into this presentation honoring survivors of cancer is just, I mean, it's a testament to the fact that when we really think globally and we're looking to save the world, those, that local impact you have had on so many is why there are more and more survivors that are walking across that stage every single DECA Fashion Show. So thank you so much for all that you do, and that you, the inspiration and magic you provide to our students, and at this time, I'm going to invite you, and Lee, and your high school DECA coordinators up to the podium to talk a bit about, and I think Mr. Long is here for this piece as well, to talk about the success of the DECA Fashion Show.
You've said, you've said what I was going to say, which is, I spoke to many of the alumni last night, it's a testimony to Jimmy and all the hard work he's put in, and the amount of money that he's raised over the years, and I don't want to steal their thunder, so I'm going to hand it over to them, but we couldn't be more proud. That's the most full I've seen the auditorium in a long time, and you should be proud of that.
Thank you. Yes, come on, Lee.
For those of you that don't know, my name is Lee McCarthy, I'm Megan's mother. I just put together a little bit, I know I said a lot last night, so, but this is about you, Jimmy, and I think I'm more emotional tonight than I was last night. For my daughter, Jim Sullivan was not just her teacher and her DECA advisor, he was her unsung hero. He gave her the opportunity to wear a prom dress that he knew she was never going to get to wear to her prom. Although her loss was personal for him, he was able to channel her loss into something positive for her grieving family, her classmates, and our community as a whole. He did this by helping her to achieve her lifetime goal of giving back to others, and especially to the Jimmy Fund. I suspect that he had no idea what he was getting into, or where it might lead. He is now my unsung hero. Here we are celebrating two amazing accomplishments from last night. For the first time ever, this magical team raised over $50,000 last night for that. Amazing, amazing. But secondly, the money that they raised last night put the Megan McCarthy Research Fund over $1 million raised. This money was not raised by large corporations or millionaires, it was raised by a grassroots group of people that came together to grant a young girl's wish, and that is truly amazing. Perhaps the biggest contribution of all, though, is that Coach Sol has inspired a generation of young philanthropists who will magnify Megan's legacy in ways none of us can even begin to imagine. She is proud, I know, very proud of you, and I am grateful, and I can't wait to see what comes next. Thanks so much, Jim.
Do I have to?
Yes, Mr. Sullivan, please.
Yes, you do.
So Colin and Cal, can I get you two over here? Cal, Kiara, I keep doing, I've been doing that all day. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you all, thank you for your kind words. This was never about me, this is about Megan, and this has always been about her, this has always been about, in this case, Colin, Kiara, Kiara, Callie, and Kiara, this is Kiara, her sister's Callie, Avery De La Piana, and Drew Renell, who are our coordinators this year. These, these groups of students go on and compete in DECA, and they write a 20-page paper, and they compete in DECA that way, but they've taken on the show year after year, and it started with Mrs. Bastieri, and I have to say that, and I always say that when I come here, whether it's honoring our students that qualify for Nationals, and she's the mother of DECA in Tuxbury, she's the one that started DECA in Tuxbury so many years ago, and she started a fashion show, and it was run for muscular dystrophy, back when Rich was in school, and when Nick was in school, and we started running the show for the muscular dystrophy because her brother had it, and so that was the cause. And then, when Megan got diagnosed, we just turned the focus to her, and then when she passed, it just went, you know, in that direction. I said it last night, we struggled for a couple of years, making sure that we maintained that focus on her, and we kind of lost a little bit of a way, but we got it back, and we had alumni last night that reached out to me and said, we're coming back. I don't reach out to them, they're in college, like, my son drove back from U and E up in Bitterford, Maine, like, I didn't say, hey, Mike, you need to come back. He did that on his own, and Sam Ryan came back from St. Az, and John Regalino came back from Endicott, and Mehir Baghul came back from Dartmouth College, and then Colby and Rebecca and Tori, the original dream team that put this thing back together with Lee, were all texting me, and they had, you know, Tori had a test at UMass, so she couldn't make it, and Colby had some leadership thing that he was doing at Providence, and Rebecca was at Maris College in New York, and they're all like, we're so sorry. But fortunately, thanks to Tuxbury Telemedia, they broadcasted, and those kids were texting me during the show, going, wow, this is awesome, this is amazing, this is unbelievable. So thanks to the town of Tuxbury and our technology, and we had students that wanted to be here that couldn't, that were watching it. So all of that has been fantastic. This has been about Megan, we are just honoring Megan and celebrating her every year, and doing what she did for other people. So I thank you for having me here, this is about these two and everybody else that's run the show year after year, because they've set a bar, and every year, it just keeps getting higher and higher and higher. And so, last year, they raised $20,000, and these guys are like, oh, we're going to do 25. And we did 38 at the end of October 20th, the day money was due to be in the show, and it's only gone crazy since then. So thank you to Lee, thank you for allowing us to do this, thank you for continuing to let us honor your daughter, who taught all of us so many lessons in her battle, and, and her life, and has, has really encouraged all of us to do more and to do for others. So that's really where it comes from. So Kiara and Cal, if you have anything you want to add, I didn't tell them they had to say anything, so. But this is, it's about them, they're the ones that do the work, I say it every year, I just drive the van, I just drive the bus, I just point them in the direction, and they're the ones that do the work. They're the ones that were returning clothes this afternoon after school that we used last night. So it's been an honor, I'll, I'll continue to do it as long as we can, and as long as we want to, but, and it's about the, the community of Tuxbury, they're the ones that continue to answer the bell and make donations, so that's it, I'm done, I, I won't stop talking.
If you don't mind, we're just going to do a recognition, but thank you very much, you, you make, you make us all proud, in the school, the whole community as a whole.
So this is kind of a special moment for me personally, just because, you know, I had three kids participating in the show last night, but I also was the Colin and Kiara back in my senior year, back here, back in 97, 98 timeframe, so, little surreal moment here, and of course Jimmy is a, not only just a, a great And of course, Jimmy is not only just a great educator, but also a good personal friend. So whereas James Sullivan is the teacher and DECA advisor at Tewksbury Memorial High School, and whereas Mr. Sullivan is in his 13th year as the organizer of the Megan McCarthy Fashion Show hosted by the DECA program, and whereas Mr. Sullivan through the fashion show has helped raise over $150,000 in Megan McCarthy's name and pushed the Megan McCarthy Research Fund to reaching over the $1 million mark, and whereas Mr. Sullivan has brought great pride, recognition, enthusiasm, and honor to himself, to his family, to Tewksbury Memorial High School, and to the town of Tewksbury. Now therefore be it resolved that the Tewksbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the many efforts of Mr. James Sullivan. On behalf of the Tewksbury School Committee.
And thank you again for being here with us. At this time, I would entertain a motion for a small, maybe five-minute recess.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion by Mr. Russo, second by Mrs. Bea Joni Smith. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. For five minutes.
Still crying.
It's now 6:37, and we resume our regular meeting with Rania is here with us today with her student update.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. So we're in the midst of the busiest season in the year, and a lot has been happening at TMHS as we know. So today, I'm going to start with some sports updates. The fall sports season is already coming to a close with MVCs along with sectional and state games, meets, and competitions already having passed for several teams. As we know, winter sports informational meeting was held on Monday, November 6, and signups have officially been opened. Winter sports are starting very soon. The football team recently beat Burlington to move on to the Final Four semifinals against Duxbury, which will be held November 18 at Zavarian Brothers High School in Westwood, Mass. Yesterday, Tewksbury hosted volleyball semifinals against Hudson and Ipswich, with Ipswich coming out on top. Next, I have quite a few club updates for us tonight. To begin, the TMHS Theater Company will be debuting their show, High School Musical, on November 17, which is this Friday, and their final performance will be on November 19. The Interact Club led this year's first blood drive, there will be two this year, where 28 students and adults donated blood. Members of the Interact Club facilitated the process and spent the day giving food, water, and just aid to those who donated blood. The Environmental Club has been also hard at work, and they've routinely been collecting the recycling from each room around the building in coordination with the custodial staff. Additionally, they're planning to partake in the Tewksbury Winter Tree Walk. And as we know, DECA had their annual fashion show yesterday, and it truly was an amazing show. It was really emotional, and it was amazing. We raised over $50,000 to a great cause. Yesterday, Student Council had also gone on a field trip. Field trip? It was to a conference known as NEMASK, where they participated in workshops about leadership and life skills, and they just had a great time. There were several other schools there, like North Reading, just the schools in the northeastern area. The Student Council has also been busy, as we've been planning the pep rally, which will be next week, November 22nd, the half-day before vacation. And there will be a lot of games, and the students can sign up for these games through their class councils. We're also planning the Spirit Week for next week, Monday's Decades Day, Tuesday's Character Day, and on the day of the pep rally, each class will wear the colors corresponding to the girls' Powderpuff teachers. In regards to this, the Powderpuff football game will be held on November 21st, which is the day before the pep rally. GSA is in the process of planning different school culture events to promote LGBTQ visibility and inclusion. And the Class of 2025's Class Council is also in the planning of a Dine Out Week along with a movie night, which will happen in December and be mainly targeted towards a younger audience, so the middle school, the elementary schools. And the specifics of it, along with what other groups may be aiding in it, are still undecided. They may be partnering with the Student Council to create this event. Lastly, the French Club is getting into full swing, and they're promoting the trip for Quebec, which we held in April of 2025. So last but not least, I'd like to just end with some miscellaneous things that are currently happening or happened this last month. So Step Up Day was held today during D and E Block, and it involved the eighth-grade students coming and touring the schools. The tours were given by members of the Student Council, who directed them around the building and into LGI-1, this room, to explore the multitude of clubs, sports, and opportunities offered here at TMHS. And members of the band also took part in Step Up Day, and they played music upon their arrival. There was also some things in the auditorium. And I just think it was a really good thing because obviously, we're losing a lot of kids to the tech, so this really helped gain some interest in what we have at TMHS. So the Second Advisor of the Year will be held tomorrow, in which the peer mentors will report to their respective freshman advisory classes. And our last peer mentor training was held last Wednesday on November 8. And finally, the parent-teacher conferences will be held tomorrow, November 16, from 8 to 10 p.m. And that's all I have for today. Thank you.
That's it?
Yep. I know, it was a lot this time, surprisingly.
Any questions for anybody on the committee?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
No, it's a really great update. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. And then now moving on, Mrs. McDermott, on the presentation on MCAS 2023 Spring.
Yes.
Actually, that would be 2024.
2023 data, 2022, 2023 data last spring.
Oh, this is from the data?
Yes. All right. You guys can hear me okay. I will project for you. So accountability is back. So this is the first year that we've really sensed the pandemic, that we've really been able to kind of dig deep back into accountability. So that's what I'm going to start with, to sort of get that out of the way and set the stage so that we're all on the same page. We're going to be talking about normative data and criterion reference data. We'll be talking about some percentiles for schools that we've got to go over and some progress toward targets that were set for us by the state. So in terms of the school percentiles, this is where we, our schools, are compared to like schools serving comparable student grade spans. And then when we're talking about the progress toward targets, we're talking about multiple years of data that looks at achievement, student growth, high school completion, English learner progress, advanced coursework completion, and chronic absenteeism. That goes into a single number between 0 and 100, which I'll show you later. And then we're assigned a target percentage. So you'll see all of that as we move through. Here, I just wanted to kind of show you, we're told whether or not we are a district in need of assistance or not based on some of the things that we have listed here. And the good news is that we are not requiring any assistance or intervention here in Tewksbury. But these are some of the factors that do contribute to that designation. So here you can see that this is the first time since 2019 that we're able to run full accountability. So in 2020, we did not have MCAS. 2001, we had an abbreviated version of MCAS, so we didn't have the accountability percentile and any progress toward any targets. 2022, we had the accountability percentile, but we didn't have any target setting. And so here we are with our first year of running both accountability percentile and progress toward targets. When we're talking about progress toward targets, we're talking about whether we're making limited or no progress toward a target, moderate progress, substantial progress, or even in some cases, exceeding the target. In terms of the school group percentiles, this data, again, is normative. So this is where we're compared to schools that are serving comparable grade spans. And so you'll see that they're divided into three groups, but for us, it's the combination of the K-8 and the 9 through 12. And so I gave you a chart to show you kind of over the past few years, from 2018 to now, where we had the data, how our accountability percentiles are showing. And so what's positive, I think, is that we're moving back toward pre-pandemic levels. You can see they've pretty much, our accountability percentiles have remained relatively consistent since 2018. In fact, there's even some notable improvement, you'll notice, at the high school, which is nice to see. This really just shows that we are showing recovery in our percentiles overall. So the other piece of information we're going to talk about, this is where I mentioned the target setting. So we have points that are assigned to us, and that's showing whether, and we're supposed to kind of meet those targets. So it's a criterion reference measure, so hang in there with me because this gets a little complicated. And it's focusing on multiple years of data, and we're looking at what's factored in is achievement, overall achievement, student growth, high school completion, English learner progress, advanced coursework completion, and chronic absenteeism. And so for a group to be considered meeting the targets just at the meeting, they've got to have that 75% or higher. And then based on those percentages, we're assigned those numbers, and I'll show you a little bit more about that in a minute. So here's an example. If you go to our, if you look at the state reporting, this is one of the first thing that pops up when you pull up Tewksbury. And I'm going to try to use my little, can you see it? It's kind of bright.
It's on you.
Yeah, so you can see what I'm pointing at. So if you look at these numbers here, there's zeros, there's fours, there's one, there's fours. So you'll see the total possible points, right? So that's out of four. And then in achievement, you can see that for English Language Arts, we didn't get any points. And that's because in terms of meeting our target, we didn't meet the target, and we declined from last year to this year in all students area. If you look at mathematics, we got one point because there was no change. We remained the same. In our science achievement there, we've got three out of four because we actually met the target. So that's kind of how it goes through all of this different criteria. That's achievement, then there's growth. You can see in the purple, there's progress toward English language proficiency. So all of these factors give us the number at the bottom. The very bottom, you'll see those arrows are pointing to 51%. So that shows that we've made substantial progress toward our target and where our overall classification is not requiring assistance. It's a lot of information and data to look at there. I just went back for you. But overall, that's what that's telling us. Another, I think, important area to point out is the chronic absenteeism at the bottom. It says additional indicators. And you can see that for all students, non-high school grades, we, and I have another slide to show you this too, but we actually exceeded the target on that. So we're getting our kids back to school, which is really important. And you can see in the high school area for that, we met the target. So that's great. High school area, we met the target for advanced coursework completion. All of these indicators are actually fairly strong. We're struggling in the area of student growth in the green. You can see for high school, we had only one point for that for no change. And in mathematics growth, that was, we improved, but we were still below the target. So you get an extra point for that. And basically, what the state is saying is, we want to recover, right? We want to keep moving our kids in the right direction to recover. So they're setting these targets to say, we want you to get to this point, we want you to get to this point, and keep moving along. And for the most part, we really are doing that. So in terms of the data, we're going to talk a little bit about achievement like we did last year, and we'll talk about student growth as well. So remember, achievement is how students are basically scoring on the test. Student growth is their growth over time. So when we're looking at student growth, we're talking about students who are scoring in a similar manner, how they achieve in the next year, right? So it's that progress over time. And we want to be shooting for between 40 and 59 in student growth. 50 is a nice target because that shows us one year of overall growth. This is a declined from last year to this year in all students area. If you look at mathematics, we got one point, because there was no change. We remained the same. In our science achievement there, we've got three out of four, because we actually met the target. So that's kind of how it goes through all of this different criteria. That's achievement, then there's growth, there's, you can see in the purple, there's progress toward English language proficiency. So all of these factors give us the number at the bottom. The very bottom, you'll see those arrows are pointing to 51%. So that shows that we've made substantial progress toward our target, and where our overall classification is not requiring assistance. It's a lot of information and data to look at there. I just went back for you. But overall, that's what that's telling us. Another, I think, important area to point out is the chronic absenteeism at the bottom. It says additional indicators. And you can see that for all students, non-high school grades, we, and I have another slide to show you this too, but we actually exceeded the target on that. So we're getting our kids back to school, which is really important. And you can see in the high school area for that, we met the target. So that's great. High school area, we met the target for advanced coursework completion. All of these indicators are actually fairly strong. We're struggling in the area of student growth. In the green, you can see for high school, we had only one point for that, for no change. And in mathematics growth, that was, we improved, but we were still below the target. So you get an extra point for that. And basically, what the state is saying is, we want to recover. Right? We want to keep moving our kids in the right direction to recover. So they're setting these targets to say, we want you to get to this point, we want you to get to this point, and keep moving along. And for the most part, we really are doing that. So in terms of the data, we're going to talk a little bit about achievement, like we did last year, and we'll talk about student growth as well. So remember, achievement is how students are basically scoring on the test. Student growth is their growth over time. So when we're looking at student growth, we're talking about students who are scoring in a similar manner, how they achieve in the next year, right? So it's that progress over time. And we want to be shooting for between 40 and 59 in student growth. 50 is a nice target, because that shows us one year of overall growth. This is a reminder, this is what parents get on the, you know, to see their student's achievement. So you can see that that 500 mark is where we start meeting expectations. Partially meeting expectations is considered still passing, and not meeting expectations is not. But that 470 mark is still considered passing. But of course, we're shooting for all of our students to be meeting expectations. A reminder about the growth, anything 1 to 39 is low growth. Typical growth is about 40 to 59, and then high growth is anything above, 60 and above. So if you look at our, the district overview of performance for ELA, English Language Arts, you can see that 49% of our students scored in the meeting and proficient range. So you can see that right at the top, that 49% number. So that means 49% of our students were meeting or exceeding. Next to that is an average scaled score. So that's telling us, I'll go back here, our average scaled score was 499, 500 being that meeting expectations. So we're pretty close. And then next to that is the average SGP, which is the average student growth percentile, again, shooting for that 50. 49 is pretty close to that. Again, 40 to 60 pretty much is typical growth. Underneath that, you'll see a colored graph where there's a black dotted line. That is the state. That's how the state did, and we are the green line above that. Next to that, there are those, the bar graphs. And the blue parts, the top blue, is the exceeding range. The lighter blue is the meeting range. The gray area is the partially meeting, and the red is the not meeting. So we're going to just look at a bunch of slides that kind of follow this same suit. So now I'm showing you the school-level overview of performance, and these are the numbers that contribute to the district overview. So if you look all the way to the left, you can see the years right over here. And 2023 is here, 2022, and it goes back. You can see that 49% at the bottom in the bold, that's what I showed you back on the previous slide, in the students proficient, that's the 49%. This is just showing you how the individual schools did in terms of students meeting or exceeding. And for the most part, we're trending in the right direction, especially the high school. If you look at this number down here, you can see that's at 72%, which we have in 2009. It's actually a little bit higher, where it was 70, and they swung back up to 72%. So we'll say a little congratulations to Mr. Long, since he happens to be here. But for the most part, we're definitely trending in the right direction. Now, in terms of the overview for performance for mathematics, again, you can see, same slide format, 46% of our students are meeting or exceeding. Our average scaled score was 497, so just below that 500. So it's in that partially meeting expectations range, but super close to the meeting. And then the average SGP was 46.5, which is down a little bit from the previous year, and it's also a little bit below the state average, which, you know, we're never thrilled to see. And then you can see the black dotted line, we are rising above the state overall as a district, and kind of trending in the same way. And then here are the schools. Hopefully, you can see those that are contributing to that overall 46%. And again, the high school is showing quite a bit of progress there, not as much as they did in ELA, but heading in the back, in the right direction. How are you doing so far?
Good.
A lot.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
In terms of the district overview of performance for science, this is, I think, a real bright spot. We, across the state, the data for science has either been, had a slight decline or been flatlined. And here in Tewksbury, you can see, district-wide, that it's, we've got a little bump. We've got 53% of our students scoring in the meeting and exceeding range. That's 10% versus the state average, plus five over last year. Our average scaled score is 500. So this was nice to see. And then you can see the school-level overview of performance, again, look at this, 2023 right here. And also, everybody here trending in a positive direction. And even the Wynn School showing even a higher percentage than in years past. So now I'm going to highlight just some student growth information for you, so I just wanted to remind you of how the student growth works. So it measures the individual students' change performance over time. So how much did the student improve in mathematics from fifth grade to sixth grade, is an example? And did the student improve more or less than their academic peers? So people who scored similarly to how they did. And so in English Language Arts, the school-level overview for student growth percentile, you can see that, for the most part, we are in the typical range. And the Wynn Middle School is in a, still with typical growth, but high. It's a higher end of the typical growth. But here, the high school is showing low growth here. And what's interesting is in 2019, that growth was pretty much the same they had in 2022. So this is definitely a trend for the high school that we certainly want to explore. And then the school-level overview for student growth in mathematics, again, we're looking at this 2023 here, but you can see across the years, everybody here is making typical growth, except to the center school. And that's low growth there, because it is below that 40 threshold. I did look back, you don't have it here, but I was able to look back at North Street and Trahan, because they are feeding into center. Our data is changing in the analytics, but this is a low for them. This is not, has not been typical. They have made typical growth in the past, and so this is a little bit lower. We would, of course, like to see, you can see that state line down the center in the next square over here, where it says average SGP by school. And this, this is the average SGP for the state. And so we certainly like to see us, at least in line with the state averages. I wanted to call out Tewksbury Memorial High School separately. This is the first time when MCAS is really considered high-stakes testing, because they do need it to graduate. So it is really nice to see. If you look at the, I can take you right down here to the state and this trend line, look at how we swoop right up there in the high school. That's really nice to see. 72% of students scoring, meeting or exceeding in ELA is really fantastic. That average scaled score of 512 right there in meeting expectations. And then again, we have that low growth. So they're coming in, they're doing well, right? They're scoring well, but they're not making much growth from where, they're making low growth from where they were last time they took the test. Same thing in mathematics. You can see us scooping right up there, not quite back to where we were pre-pandemic, but definitely on our way, and certainly trending in a more positive direction than the state overall. 65% of our students meeting and exceeding, and an average scaled score of 507. And the average SGP is down from the state average, and it's down from previous years, but it is within that typical range, but it's low typical. So again, they're scoring well, but they're just not making as much growth as we might Science for the high school was relatively, they, you know, 55% of students scored proficient. That's meeting and exceeding, which is great. They're right in that average scaled score of meeting, but not quite the same upward trend as math and ELA. Any questions before I keep on going? Getting there.
We can hold off till the end, though.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll hold off till the end.
Okay. So you know, from being at the MASCE conference, that, and you even have this in your consent agenda, the commissioner is very focused on chronic absenteeism all across the state. We know that we can't educate students who are not here, right? So it's super important to get our students back to school, but it's really nice to see. I wanted to show you this slide, because this is an example of the targets that were set for us. I'll go through it with you, but it's really nice to see that we're exceeding those targets. So to explain it a little bit, if you look at the all students, you can see that in 2022, we had 18.3% of students missing 20% or more, 10%, 10% or more of the school year. So that's about 18 days, 18 or more. So whether you miss 18 or you miss 35, you're still in that number. So this year, in 2023, we had about 12% of students. So while we still would like to see that number come down, it's come down quite a bit from where it was. You can see there's additional data here in some of our subgroups that are maybe not doing as well in terms of getting to school as some of the others. But all are trending in the right direction, which is, again, really nice to see. Let me just let you look at that for a second. Any questions about this? Go ahead.
I just have a quick question. Does this, do we, can we see what the state is? Are we higher or lower than the state average?
I don't think we have state averages on, we...
There is in your consent agenda some state data on chronic absenteeism. I just want to go back and correct one thing, too. It is 10%. Now, if a student were here all days of the year, 180, they were enrolled in Tewksbury, it's 10% of the 180. If you're enrolled here for 50 days, it would be five or more that would be chronically absent. So it's 10% of your period of time here in school with us. So, I mean, and when you do look at the numbers, I just, not to hijack the presentation, but, you know, 12% of our, say, 800 last year, 700-ish students is still a lot. 18 and 1/2% of our, you know, students with disabilities is even more concerning. So we have to look at the impact of not, of chronic absenteeism on all groups, and not just the overall, but how, truly, I think Lori put it perfectly, it's hard to educate students that aren't here.
So along those same lines, it's reported separately for the high school. And so again, we're trending in the right direction, not as much progress as in the non-high school levels. We still have about 20% of our students missing 18 or more days of school. We want to continue to see that number decline. You can see that some of our subgroups improved a bit, but remained below the target, or in some cases, even declined.
Can I go back to Ms., through you, Madam Chair, just to Ms. Anderson? In your consent agenda, you'll see from the state average, high school, we'll just say, because we're looking at high school here, the chronic absenteeism rate was 29.9. So, you know, we're seeing that we are, at least, I would say, better than the state in that regard.
What level was that?
High school.
High school. Any other questions about this one? Okay, so in terms of takeaways, these are just a few of the things that I feel like, when I look at this data, I see that our accountability percentiles certainly remain consistent. It's a positive. Our student growth percentiles are mostly typical at the non-high school level, so we're showing some typical growth. Would still really like to see that improve, continue to improve. Our achievement and student growth percentile gaps, they still exist in areas with students with disabilities, high needs, low income, some of those subgroups that we really want to focus on. Overall achievement levels, I still think there's room for improvement there. Our high school achievement level certainly improved, which is wonderful. Again, I'd still like to see that student growth percentile for those students continue to show more growth. Chronic absenteeism is improving. We're not quite there yet, but we're on the right path. We're showing greater improvement in ELA and science, which was nice to see, even though we didn't get the points for that ELA, because we didn't meet that target. We are still headed in that direction, and our EL students are making solid progress, which is great to see. In terms of what do we do now, it's really important, in order to continue the road to recovery, that we're still working closely with our special education partners, district administrators, and field experts. So we're still working with, we brought in Dr. Allan Bloom this year to talk about eligibility and the new IEP process. We're still working with the MGH Sale Literacy Lab, focusing on our early literacy programming. We're still focusing, as a district, on early literacy and numeracy, where we've had a lot of teachers attend the Tang Math that just happened a few weeks ago. We're still implementing Hegarty and Foundations. And what will be interesting is this year's third graders will be the first year who have had the new math all the way. So it will be interesting to see how they do. And what's hard is when we're implementing all of these new programs, you know, myself included, you get excited and think, it's going to change all of everything overnight. And I know that it doesn't. Anybody will tell you, it's a good three to five years before you really start to reap the benefits. It feels like a really long time. But again, we are moving in the right direction. So we're looking, we're still moving forward with our K6 implementation of EL education. And what I love about the way that we're doing that is there's a lot of teacher professional development and planning time for teachers built in, collaborative planning time. So we're supporting them all along the way through that implementation. Our literacy coach and director of literacy have also been heavily supporting in that. I think the K4 implementations of standards-based report cards, the conversations that we're having about looking at formative assessment data and developing instructional support strategies and plans for students based on what we're seeing in that formative data is really good, really good stuff, and really drilling down to that standards level is important. In terms of the new math curriculum, whereas in reading, we have reading specialists, we have some Title I support that we're putting into our reading programming, in math, where we, kind of, the model we're using is a little bit different. It's more of an instructional coaching model, where we're training our teachers to provide the tiered intervention through the use of concrete, pictorial, and abstract methods of instruction. So when a student is working, they start at the concrete, they move to pictorial, and then to the abstract. And they can continue to bring those students through that loop as they run into obstacles and start to struggle, and bring them back to the concrete. And our instructional coaches are supporting our teachers with that all the time. We also have common formative assessments in Otis that we're using to track student progress toward the standards in all of the new standards-based grading information that we're putting into Otis. And that's helpful, because we don't have a universal screener in mathematics like we do in English Language Arts with our DIBELS. So we're really relying heavily on our local formative data, which I think is... So we're really relying heavily on our local formative data, which I think is great. We're even comparing our local DIBELS data, if we compare our local DIBELS data to our MCAS data, we're really seeing a positive trend in our lower-level DIBELS data, which gives us hope that as the students move into those MCAS grades, that they will be more prepared to take the test. As you know, from our district goals, we have a district-wide focus on data-driven decision-making. So our district directors are meeting with all of our principals to review local data and determine next steps for instruction and what we need to do for professional development. Those meetings just started this year. We're also engaging with PLCs, as you know, around data to determine instructional supports. And sometimes curriculum directors are coming into those meetings, coaches are coming into those meetings, principals are attending those meetings. We took our DIBELS universal screener up through grade eight this year, and we're putting interventions into place at the Title I schools, which are Center, the Ryan and the Wynn. We also added some Lexia programming, which is a wonderful intervention program for students in ELA. It's adaptive, so they take a diagnostic assessment and it places them, it's a little placement test, puts them in, and supports all of their early literacy skills and adapts to their performance. And Mrs. Regan and I feel very confident that our district goals are fully aligned to support our continued student growth. Lastly, I gave you a pretty comprehensive appendix of all kinds of fun information that you can look at later if you really want to dig into some of the subgroup information and look at some of that target setting that I talked about. All right. Questions?
Any comments?
There's a whole ton of comments.
Okay, Ms. Russo, why don't you start us off?
So Ms. McDermott, first of all, thanks for taking us through that. There's a lot of information here. And so I'm going to reserve some questions for later.
Well, and that's the other thing I wanted you to know. With all of the accountability, we are happy to sit down with you and really dig into it. It's a lot. I kind of wrestled with how much to go into it tonight. I couldn't ignore it as much as I wanted to because I didn't want you to glaze over, but in terms of just giving you a high-level overview, but once, if you wanted to sit and really go into the data together.
So I'm going to keep my questions very high-level at this point, just because I do want to sort of marinate in some of this after our meeting here and be able to really understand things a little bit better. But when we're looking at some of the data from the school level, whether it's ELA, math, whatever, what's the best way to look at this when you're looking at it across the years? Because our student population changes schools every two to three years. So if I go back to 2018 and 19 and go, let's just say the Treyhan or North Street, by the time you get to 2021, they're at the Ryan. By the time you get to 2023, they're at the Wynn. So should I be looking at this on a, not necessarily looking at the individual school across, should I be kind of looking at, because those students are moving with this, right? So what's the best way to understand some of that from that perspective?
Yeah, I mean, you can do that. Sometimes I go diagonally and say, okay, if I want to see how the students who took it in 2018 did, right? I'd really have to give you the actual, on the last, I think it's your last slide, you can see every grade.
Yeah.
That's a little bit more of a deeper dive for you. I stayed school level, but if you really wanted to look across the grades, you can do that diagonally across, right? If you went in, I can show you this data. This is just for this year, but I can show you across the schools how it goes if you wanted to look by grade level. Because by looking this way, you wouldn't really see, you're not going to see each grade level, but you'll still get some idea, right? From the Ryan to the Wynn. If you went from 2018, look at the Ryan there, I'm looking at ELA. And then if you went down to 2019 at the Wynn, you can go in that direction.
Yeah, okay.
And back to your question, sort of about grade level and then state average, that's the page you're going to see. Remember, this is about recovery.
Right.
So of course, we're worried about our students in Tewksbury, but we're seeing some great recovery, even though we're not where we want to be. And if you look at that detailed data by grade level, you'll see grade four, six and seven. In both subject areas are really the three grades that aren't making the rate of recovery we want when compared to the state. When I say that, not all students, but we're not, those are the only three grade levels not above the state percentile there, which is a good story. But again, that recovery still has some room to go and is where we have to dig a little deeper. There you go.
So that goes, I guess, maybe to my next maybe question, maybe final question here for now anyway, is just sort of stepping back at a high level, like what's the outcome we're looking to achieve here, right? So you talk about recovery, Ms. Regan, and I don't disagree that that's a good goal for right now, given sort of where we've been the last few years. Makes total sense to me. You know, I know there's a lot of controversy around MCAS, right? And at the end of the day, you know, some of those decisions are probably going to be out of all of our hands, right? And we'll see where that goes. So how do we step back from this and say, okay, as a district, what are the outcomes we're looking for? Because you might say, okay, ELA is 70% achievement or proficient or exceeding or meets, but the SGP is low, but it's kind of like the velocity acceleration curve, right? You're still going fast, but you're now just going faster at a slower pace, right? So you get to that, close to that 100% achievement or meets and above, you're going to go at a slower pace just because there's not much room to grow, right? From the 70% to 100% max.
So yeah, I find myself feeling that way too sometimes. But then when I look at like our DART districts, so we're compared to like district students that have similar student demographics as us, and so they're in the same situation, right? So their SGPs tend to be, they're higher. So some students are able to do that. They're able to have high achievement and high growth. Some students show high achievement and low growth. And that's something as an educator that we definitely want to keep our eye on because we want to keep moving our kids. If they've shown that they can learn and meet with success in learning, that we want to keep moving them in the right direction. But I find myself thinking the same thing, even when I look at my own children's scores, saying, okay, well, and I think ultimately, we want them to be able to graduate, right? So that's the ultimate goal of MCAS is we're monitoring how our students are doing. But we also look at it from the teacher lens, is how are our students doing overall in comparison to students across the state? How are we doing in providing effective instruction? And so I will never deny that this is one moment in a student's life. And should it be all encompassing of everything? Absolutely not. Anything can happen on a day, right? On one day. So we're always trying to triangulate that data and look at our local data and see overall how students are achieving, and that's why we're looking at trends. We also know that a lot of the colleges are not, you know, looking so heavily at SATs and ACTs and that type of thing because, for the same reason, it's one moment in time. But we want to know on our end that we're doing everything we can to prepare our students to meet with success.
And I think when you think back on our district goals, we're really strengthening our instructional supports and learners. That's key because, you know, this is really a snapshot of our, you know, while all of our educators are working incredibly hard for students to achieve, this is really a snapshot of our district, our instruction, less the student. Really recovering now, students have some skin in that game, right? There were counts too. But you know, MCAS is that moment where we look at is what we're doing in our instructional program or PD program or level of supports in building the learner as effective as we want to. So I think it's a twofer. That's why when we look at our formative data cycle, there is no doubt that's going to bring about greater growth and achievement because that formative data cycle, the snapshot day-to-day of how they're doing gets you to improve those supports for that next learning day. That's why that's such an important goal. And you saw that riddled all throughout what comes next is that data-driven decision-making in the instructional cycle.
Thank you very much.
This is riveting, Rania, you show it.
Ms. Russo, anything more?
No, nothing further. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Parsons?
Well, I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Anderson? Just a question. Is there any data behind on when we're expected to recover from the learning loss in COVID?
That pathway to recovery, if you remember, was two to five years. What's nice is we're seeing those trends. And again, I do want to draw your attention, all other areas were above that state average in that trend of recovery. So we feel like we're in, I mean, science to me, it may feel like a small win here, but we are seeing real growth there and through your support too by putting in the, you know, teachers and the programs, the STEM programming now, K through six and seven and eight, adding them. Remember, it's not just a science test. It's a science, technology and engineering. And we are now seeing the growth in those tests. That's, it might not look great on paper to me. I know that that's taken a lot of time and we're getting there. So I think there's a lot of win here, but a lot of room for that recovery still. The EL, that purple line, we haven't always had a cohort in that population to give us, but look at, we got three out of four points there. That's huge. That shows that cohort of students making that level of gain, you know, when obviously it's a cohort of students that represent grades three through 10.
Okay, sorry. Mrs. Anderson? No, it's okay. And just last thing, I may take you up on your offer to go deeper into this so I can just understand better.
Mrs. Bea Joni Smith? Just one comment, and you both said it. This test is a moment in time. It's a moment in time. So to the parents and to the families who look at this, get this huge packet in the mail with all of this information, especially the younger kids, what is the message to them? What do you have to kind of say back to them to reassure, to affirm their, you know, their trust, all of that, that your kids are still learning, they're still doing great? But this is, it is what you said. It's a moment in time. We learned that, you know, we hear that over and over again.
Yeah, I think remembering that a big piece of it, especially for the younger students, it's stamina, right? You can be a pretty solid reader. You can, you know, if I'm a parent and getting this, I'm saying, I'm surprised my child didn't do better, you know, they can read. But you've really got to build up a level of perseverance. It's a long test. And you're watching some of your friends are finishing, you know, you have all day to take the test, so you get, you know, sometimes you're transitioned to another location and you've got to really kind of stick it out. So teachers do a lot of practicing in just how to take a test like this. You're also, you're not handing this in to a teacher who's really holding you accountable. So it's a whole different level of test-taking than they're used to. So it's not like they're going to get like direct feedback on this. So again, a lot of onus goes on the student, and I have found that as they get older, they get better at it. It takes some time to get used to taking the test and to build up that stamina and find that perseverance to sort of push through it. But all of our students, it's not like we have a building full of students who can't graduate because they aren't able to pass MCAS, right? We have those educational proficiency plans for students that don't succeed on MCAS or are in that warning range. And you don't, remember, keep in mind, it's easy to forget, that partially meeting is considered passing.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Was that all?
My only question, thank you so much for putting this all together. I think this is just the beginning of my questions. But it's just more about at the district level. I think I'm glad that you included the information on how the directors are going out, you know, to schools and things like that. But you know, at the teacher level, what's the mechanism for teachers to either work together on understanding their grade level, you know, results or school level results? And then kind of how do they pivot with some of the?
Yeah, they're doing that in their PLCs. They do that through, say, start at the faculty meeting level with their principals, and then they move to really diving into that data in their PLCs. And really trying to see what are the trends? Where are we seeing that our students in terms of the standards? Jason does a really nice job of pulling out that data into Otis and showing where the students, which standards the students are weakest in. And you can use Otis to actually make a group. These students struggled in this standard, and I can pull this group of students to work on that.
Wow.
Yeah, Otis is a wonderful tool. That's a lot of work for Jason because Otis doesn't do it all by itself, but he inputs all of that.
And it's flexible, so that provides you that certain weeks of intervention with that group, and then, okay, that's that formative assessment cycle. Now, is that working? Because then the group may change. And when Lori talks about standards, as you will have seen in many of the standards-based report cards, whether it's reading comprehension or language or writing, because all of that feeds into one score. So if you don't know where the issue lies, not only in the district, but down to the classroom or student level, it's hard to intervene.
I mean, that's helpful. I think, and to speak a little bit to what Mrs. Bea Joni Smith is saying, I think there's a lot of families who feel like there's so much kind of a punitive response when students struggle on these high-stakes tests. It's nice to hear that actually that information's being used to maybe guide how much support they're getting when they, you know, are identified as needing that support. So I think that's helpful to hear, at least in our district. That's what's important to me is how we're doing it in Tewksbury. So thank you. That's the end of my questions for right now. I'm not going to go too deep on that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and Citizens Forum is next on our agenda. I don't see anybody here at this time.
MCAS will clear a room.
So that'll bring us over to Mrs. Anderson with our approval of minutes.
Thank you. I make a motion to approve the October 11, 2023 regular meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mrs. Anderson, a second by Mrs. Bea Joni Smith. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and that motion passes unanimously.
I make a motion to approve the October 18, 2023 special meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bea Joni Smith. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that also passes unanimously. Now for our bills.
I make a motion to approve the payroll period ending October 12, 2023 in the amount of $1,582,381.41.
I'll second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Mrs. Anderson, a second by Mr. Russo to approve and certify the payroll period ending October 12, 2023 in the total amount of $1,582,381.41. Mr. Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Bea Joni Smith?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well for unanimous vote. Approval.
I make a motion to approve the payroll period ending October 26, 2023 in the amount of $1,592,721.47.
I'll second that.
Okay, so I have a motion by Mrs. Anderson and a second by Mr. Russo. Mr. Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mrs. Bea Joni Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well for unanimous. Affirmative.
I make a motion to approve the payroll period ending November 9, 2023 in the amount of $1,724,163.72.
I'll second that.
A motion by Mrs. Anderson, a second by Mr. Russo to approve and certify the payroll period ending November 9, 2023 in the total amount of $1,724,163.72. Mr. Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Bea Joni Smith?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well for unanimous, affirmative. And then for our superintendent and staff report, Mrs. Teri O'Regan, please.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you to you and members of the committee for allowing us to accompany all of you to this year's Massachusetts Association of School Committee members and Massachusetts Association School Superintendents Annual Conference. I know I speak for myself, Assistant Superintendent Ms. McDermott, this was her first first time going to that conference. But when I tell you that this year's conference was the best MAS C, MAS S conference I've ever been to, the wide variety of sessions were engaging and very relevant to the hard work we do as school leaders. The presentations focused on our current challenges in education leadership and suggested best practices, just some of the many sessions I attended, Lori as well, and she attended some I did not, were on the Massachusetts Updated IEP, the future of artificial intelligence in education, electrification of buses and a grant opportunity for that, legal issues in education, exploring the possibility of a district-based daycare for staff, and equity and inclusion practices for all, just to name a few of the sessions. So again, thank you. It was a joy to be with all of you, and the networking with other superintendents and other school committees was of real value.
I would agree. I was, I was pleasantly surprised by how much, how many workshops they had on instruction, you know, curriculum. It was, it was really great. It was like, like Brenda said, it was really one of the best that I've attended.
Well done. And last week, many of you know and saw that we honored our veterans by having our students at the Center Elementary, Ryan, and Wynn School write and create thank you cards between the Ryan, the Center Elementary School, oh, the Heathbrook and the Doing, I'm sorry, hundreds, stacks and stacks, envelopes. Jimmy Williams needed a wheelbarrow practically to get them out of central office, but they were given to Mr. Williams from our local VFW to deliver to the veterans of the Bedford VA. I know from past responses we've had from the veterans at, in Bedford, they bring a smile to the many veterans' faces and remind them just how much we're thankful to have their service. Last week, we sent a letter out, and Rania talked about this a little bit, we sent a letter out to all of the families of our eighth-grade students highlighting the many academic opportunities offered at Tewksbury Memorial High School. You can see we have nine dual enrollment courses, 16 AP classes, 24 honors classes, engineering innovation pathways, a senior project, professional career pathway planning. Eighty-one percent of our 2023 graduates attending four-year, into-year universities, and of course, our seal of bilinguacy. And today, as Rania described to you, was our eighth-grade step-up day here at the high school. Every eighth-grade team came for an hour. As she said, they were greeted by the band, they had songs sung to them from our high school musical performers. They listened to presentations, of course, but then were given tours and then had interactive displays and activities through the clubs, athletic programs, and activities. So many, many members of our extracurricular clubs not only shared information, but displayed things they were very proud of to be a part of at the high school. So it was truly a great day for our eighth-grade students and also for our high school staff who participate in that. It's always energizing to meet the new students potentially coming here. So I shared with you the letter that not only went home, but will also go out in our district newsletter again. As a very late but important update to you and your packet is a memo about some recent state-mandated health screenings at our schools. And as you charged me with any change that we may be putting into our handbooks, I would be informing you of that. So the memo you have in front of you is the change around state-mandated health screenings. And mostly the impact, as you'll see, is now they include preschool or pre-K. They've eliminated grade five from the mandated hearing screening and of course, remind parents these are mandated screenings, but any parent that may refuse these screenings should call their school nurse. As I said, these will be placed into all of our grade-level handbooks. Next week on November 22, and Ms. McDermott's going to give you an update a little bit about standards-based report cards for grades K through four, or one through four specifically that are new, but our grades five through 12, not five through eight, students will be receiving their Term One report card on Wednesday, November 22. Parents can see the, again, the register periods for all levels of report cards through our Aspen student portal. And then finally, with the onset of the colder weather, I'm pleased to inform you that we will be able to open our Tewksbury Memorial High School indoor walking track that's above the gym back up to, open to the public from Monday, November 27 through the end of March, March 31. The indoor walking track will be open from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays when school is in session. So let me say that again, the indoor track will be open on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. when school is in session. And I appreciate the patience of our community and to you, Madam Chair and the committee. This did take a little while for us to plan as it entailed us to think about, first and foremost, school security, managing the facility, but also, you know, just committing to the funds to have a security person with the locked door, opening the door, having people sign in and sign back out like we had done in the past. I can assure you, we will be using a portion of our revolving funds, and this will not impact our general educational school budget. So we will again post this information on our district newsletter and on our website too for those who are interested. And that completes my updates for the evening.
Any questions or comments?
I'll just, maybe just say thank you very much for making that last piece about the indoor track a priority. I know as committee members, you know, we've gotten some outreach from the community about that, so I appreciate that being a priority. And also, thank you for sharing about the whole step-update thing because I, you know, I know as a committee, we've said many a times when we can get our high school students engaging with our younger-age students at another school, and certainly here in the eighth grades here, that's a, that's a great opportunity for those levels to come together. And so we appreciate that. Thank you.
Mrs. Joni Smith?
No, I'm also, thank you.
Mr. Parsons?
No questions.
Mrs. Anderson?
I'm good, thank you.
And again, I thank you so much for the work on the track, also Mr. Libby, and thank you to our town manager for also working with you on this. So it's very exciting. Thank you.
And Mrs. McDermott? Thank you, Madam Chair. So I won't belabor the point, but in your packet you have the update from Commissioner O'Reilly on chronic absenteeism. This, it's just an important area of focus across the state. We're all still well behind pre-pandemic levels, and so we can't emphasize enough to the community how important it is that our students are here in school as much as possible, of course, not when they're sick, but when they're healthy, it's important, important to be here. And you can't get good at being here if you're not here. And that can be hard. And we know that there are still probably a lot of students who are struggling to come back because learning at home was comfortable and fun, and we've kind of fell out of the routine. And, and I, I would say that there are probably some students where that might even feel a little more comfortable to them. But we, it's one of those things where you just can't get better at it unless you're here. So anything that we can do to support families, to help their students come back to school, we are all on board for doing that. So please reach out. In your packet, you also have the 2324 poster and PSA. So this is a poster project and PSA project, so it's open to all elementary, middle, and high school students as well as students, student organizations, clubs, athletic teams. And the theme for this project is respect. Give it, get it. So that's, when you, basically you can create a PSA or a poster about what respect looks like or means to you. And the deadline for poster submissions is January 26, 2024. I can't believe we're saying 2024. And the deadline for the PSA submissions is April 26, 2024. This is put out by the Massachusetts Partnerships for Youth, and we're there, we partner with them for a lot of professional development. They give us a lot of support, so happy to share this opportunity. A reminder that this is American Education Week, which is a wonderful time to recognize and honor our educators and all of our district and school employees for whom we are so incredibly grateful for. This, this celebration really includes everybody, custodians, bus drivers, anybody who has anything to do with supporting students in education. So shout out to, to all of our school employees, and we'll be putting something in the district, district newsletter. I believe today actually, in their calendar of events, is actually Support Teachers Day, so ESPs and AIDS. So we all know that schools could not function without our support staff. In terms of the standards-based report card update, we had a wonderful standards-based report card parent presentation meeting. I wish more people were there, but I was happy to see about 40 families there. It was a beautiful, really, one of the nicest nights of, of the whole year, so I wasn't expecting too many. There were a lot of sporting events going on. I know how busy everybody is, but it was really nice to have the 40 families that we did have. They were super-engaged and asked really thoughtful, great questions. So we, what we did is we put a standards-based report card link on the website, and that has the entire presentation with a voiceover. It also has the presentation slides that have some live links for support documents. And then I created a pretty comprehensive FAQ document for frequently-asked questions that parents can access. Teachers have been doing a great job sharing all this information in, in their communications and in the parent-teacher conferences that just happened. And the, I met with a group of teachers just recently because we've revived the standards-based report card steering committee again so that we can keep the work moving forward, and they were sharing that. Overall, families were pretty positive in the, in the conferences about it and didn't have, have too many questions. I think that we'll probably get the most questions after the first report card launches, and they're like, what is this? So we will be here for them, and I've, I've said in the district communications that if anybody after they get their report cards feel like they want to just come and sit down with me, I'm happy to, happy to do that with any family that wasn't able to make it or just still has some questions that teachers can certainly answer those to. What else about, oh, so in the standards-based report card steering committee is back up and running, and we have teachers working on a benchmark document. What that means is because the standards are year-end standards, so a student isn't expected, and that's going to be a real shift for families, a student is not expected to master these standards until the end of the year. So what we're doing is creating a benchmark document to, to show in Term One, where can I expect my student to be based on what you've taught them, what they've learned in school? So that way, when a parent receives the report card and they might see, they could possibly see mastery, they might think, wow, it's December, and they've mastered this, you know, these standards already. Not, not necessarily. They have mastered what we've taught toward that standard up until this point. So we want to create a benchmark document that can, can accompany the report card so they can have an understanding of this is where my, my student is now. We had some great professional development for teachers on October 18 around standards-based report cards, and they had a lot of information, we shared a lot of information just about standards-based grading overall, the importance of formative assessment, and how to use Otis to help track student progress. In the feedback we got, they asked for more time for this. They said, it was, the feedback was very, very positive. It was building-based, professional development. I was here at Center. Jason Stamp was at Heathbrook, and Felicia Chenadovich was at the Doing, and they said, please, would be great if we could have one more session before that first report card launches. So we were able to do that, and so we will support them again on December 1st. And I think that concludes my update.
You might want to say our first standards-based report card goes out to those grade levels in December 15.
December 15 is the first report card, yes. And it will be different, but we are here to support you, and hopefully you will find that it's a lot more informative.
Any questions or comments?
Thank you very much.
Just to say thank you too, yeah. Just thank you, I think you've done a lot of work to help to make sure families are comfortable with this change. It's a big change.
It's a big change.
I'm going to be really interested to see how many people get out in their backpacks, and they're like, what is this?
Oh, I should say, they actually won't get it in their backpacks. It will come as an attachment in Aspen, and I have that stated in the newsletter. So it will come as, as a digital attachment in Aspen. So the worry is, you know, you got to go get it. You got to go look for it. It's not going to, not going to land.
We'll instruct people how to do that.
Yeah, just thank you again for all the communication and the training and the voiceover and.
Yeah, sure. No, I realize it's a, it's a really big change. It will take a little bit.
I mean, hopefully by this point of the year, people have their Aspen information straightened out, but maybe just an update to families ahead of time to, because, you know, yeah, undoubtedly, everybody's looking for something on the Friday at 5:00 p.m.
Right.
Passwords?
It does.
Lost the password or something. So that would be helpful, I would imagine. But no, thank you so much. It was a great update. And Mr. Libby?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple of updates on some projects we're kind of in the works with. Our Wynn-Ryan HVAC project update. Where, we started the bid process on November 1st, put that out in the public, and we opened the electrical contractors' subbid, subbid today. That's, the, on a project of this size, we, some of the trades get subbid with, for the general contractor, and that was the process we went through today. The general contractor will bid on the entire project. Those will be submitted and opened next Wednesday, day before Thanksgiving. So we'll have an idea then what the total project cost will be for both of those schools. The Heathbrook project, we have, we're in the process of getting three quotes on our design and engineering for the, for the project, for the five classrooms. We were trying to get a new HVAC system installed, the greenhouse wall replaced, new ceiling and new partition wall in between those, those five classrooms. We've had site visits with three design-engineering firms. We have pricing back from one, they're waiting on pricing back from the other two. And then we'll decide which company to give the design and engineering work to and what, how to proceed with the projects, whether we group that all together, bid it as one project, or we might, we're debating whether we want to split that up and run them as separate projects and act as the general contractor ourselves, or how we want to manage that. So we'll discuss that once we have a, an engineering and design company chosen and move forward with that. Transportation, things have been quieted down from a driver perspective. We had another driver successfully become licensed last week. So we do have enough big yellow bus drivers currently for the 23 vehicles that we're operating. We did reduce one bus, if you remember, from the 24 we initially ran at the beginning of the year. So we had one driver pass. If you remember, we had two drivers sort of on loan temporarily from Connecticut. One of those is ending their time with us this week and going back to their home base outlet in Connecticut. So we'll have one of those still in our fleet, but we do have two more drivers in training. They expect to be taking their license tests within a month or so. But we do have a spare driver who's very familiar with, with all the routes in town that's available if someone's not around. We also have two people in the office who are licensed to drive, so it's been much quieter. Hesitate to say, but yeah, best three or four weeks, we haven't had the, at least, you know, had to run double runs and. had to run double runs and things of that nature to get people to school. So from that perspective, it's been a much quieter operation in the transportation world. And the walking tracks opening Monday after Thanksgiving. That's all I got.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Thank you.
I just have one question on transportation. How are the arrival times been running?
We're at the elementary, there's a couple that are like pretty close to the 8:45 when school's supposed to start. We don't have a lot of leeway to slide their start time earlier. It's kind of an issue of the whole window of drop-off. It's something we need to look at for a myriad of reasons. Transportation's one of them. Breakfast is another one. The whole just arrival, getting everybody in a building in 15 minutes is just logistically difficult. So for a lot of reasons, I'd love to look at if we could expand that window of time where we could drop students off. It would help a lot of, in a lot of ways, for us to be able to give us more flexibility in when we can start routes and end routes. But there's a lot of factors that have to be ironed out before we go down that road, but...
But it sounds like markedly improved.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, thank you. That's it for me. All right, and then that moves us to our consent agenda. It sounded like all the items were addressed pretty well. Any questions or comments on consent agenda?
Yeah, just one note on the wellness update, the membership update. The only thing, I saw the two new adds. Officer Riser is also a member of that committee as their SRO, so I just want to make sure he gets added to that list. He's been participating, you know, since we added. So I just want to make sure, because we did add an SRO, and Officer Riser, I believe, is the one that was appointed.
We'll make sure to add that.
And he has a motion to approve consent agenda?
I'm making a motion to accept the consent agenda. It's presented with the review of the wellness.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, so a motion by Ms. Bea Johnny Smith and a second by Mr. Russo to approve the consent agenda with the amendment to add Officer Riser to the wellness list. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, no opposed, so that passes unanimously. That brings us to some school committee member reports, starting off with the Tewksbury CPAC.
Yeah, so the CPAC met October 19th, was their last meeting, and there was a lot that happened in that meeting. It was a well-attended, heavy on the agenda. We talked about, first of all, family engagement, including the visit to the Tewksbury Fire Department and some of the things they have coming up, the library and the bank, which is always something that they do. There were conversations around sibling support and the possibility for a session on focusing on that for siblings with students with disabilities and how to provide the support to those family members that need that. There was also a lot of conversation surrounding transitions, and that would likely be a topic for them to bring in the future, presenter, speaker, or whatnot. There's a date in January set for the administration meet and greet. I think it was tentative for January 18th. I had written down, but I was, I had scribbled, so I couldn't tell if it was a six or an eight, so I have to go back and look at that. But I'm pretty sure it was 18th, January 18th. And then there's an upcoming, several upcoming parent support group meetings. What they're doing this time around, they're fluctuating between in-person and Zoom meetings, just to be more accommodating of people who may not be able to get out and for the people who wanted to get out, go somewhere. So we can look for those dates on the CPAC site, on Facebook, or they can email Nick or I, or the CPAC themselves to get that information. And then just one amendment, their next meeting was supposed to be tomorrow, but it had to be moved to November 30th. I don't know, finished anything, Nick?
No, we covered it. Thank you.
And...
Melissa?
Have anything to add?
Oh, no, no, no. Oh, sorry.
No, no, I have no questions on CPAC. Thank you. It was a great update. And any other questions on CPAC? I'm sorry, and moving on to the next thing, wellness?
Yep. Honestly, there's nothing more to report. We have not met since early October, so since our last meeting, we have not had an additional meeting. Our next meeting is scheduled for December 6th. I do think, though, that in the interim, you know, we're having a lot of discussion about what are the overall goals that we want to establish for this committee of approximately 15 or so individuals. That'll be a focus for sure at our December meeting.
Great. Any questions on wellness? And then Policy Subcommittee, Mrs. Anderson?
Yeah, we can go into the changes, proposals, and adoptions if we want.
Okay, sure.
Okay. So for policy changes, proposals, and adoptions, we're looking to have approval, actually, this is for informational reading only. These policies have been reviewed and recommending to revise.
So that's KBDA, KBE, KCD, KB, KDB, KDD, and KE. Any questions or comments on discussion on any of these policies? These will come before us two additional times. No questions? Go ahead. Moving on.
Okay, for first readings, the policies have been reviewed and recommending to revise, FB, HB, HF, KA, KBA, and LBC.
Any questions or comments on these? Again, this is first reading. We'll see these before us one additional time before we're asked to finalize and vote to approve on these.
And then for our second and final readings, which are policies reviewed and recommended to revise, FA and HA.
Any questions or comments on these?
No.
Okay, so this is our final reading of FA, Facilities Development Goals, and HA, Negotiations Goals. So if there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion to approve these.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
So a motion by Mrs. Anderson, a second by Mr. Russo. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And so FA, Facilities Development Goals, and HA, Negotiation Goals, passes as amended and revised.
And then a first and final reading, which is, we're recommending to approve with no changes, KCB.
And that's Community Involvement in Decision Making. So this is our first and final reading of this policy. Motion to approve this, a motion. So a motion by Mrs. Bea Johnny Smith, a second by Mrs. Anderson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and so KCB, Community Involvement in Decision Making, has been approved with no changes. So our policy handbook should have three new updates pretty soon. And for old business...
Thank you, Madam Chair. In front of you is an informational item only. And what I've given to you now is, the first page is our official numbers from October, which put our district total at 3,205 students. And then I just wanted to show you a little movement we saw in November, which was really positive, was an additional 17 students. So, I mean, we saw the majority of the influx of newly enrolled students in preschool through grade one, but you can see a little bit of movement in the middle grades as well. So this is a fluctuating number throughout the year. I don't report to you enrollment all year long, but now that we have our official number, which is what was reported to DESI, we'll see this go up and down slightly. Also very pleased to show you that our class sizes are still very low, even with the slight growth that we've had. So that is, as I said, informational only.
Any questions or comments on enrollment? Thank you very much. So that was our, next would be our discussion to move forward on the transfer of the North Street School. So I guess I'd like to first open the discussion with administration. If you have any thoughts, kind of just maybe backstory and how the building's going to be used since we last discussed it, and talk a little more about where we're headed.
Well, in a minute, I'll turn it over to Mr. Libby to just describe for you, you know, what happens when a building sits somewhat empty over time. But right now, as you know, and I think just through the winter season, North Street is being used for overflow for our chairing, high school chairing program. And otherwise, we're not using the building for anything else. Some of the youth time was used over there as well. But Mr. Libby, why don't you talk about the building itself?
Yeah, we've, it's not good for any building to sit unoccupied, particularly your building that old. We've had some roof leaks, unfortunately, that they go unnoticed for a long amount of time because no one's there to see them. So, you know, our maintenance guys do get in and patch them, but, you know, water gets in the building, and that's not good for a building when it sits with water in it for an extended period. We had some pipe leaks when we did turn the heat on when we got to the colder weather recently. The older pipes in the building, just the pressure from now, the water flowing through, had some pipe leaks, so we had to have some plumbing work done to just patch those up. So just general maintenance is kind of creeping up and needing to be done even though no one's occupying the building, except for, you know, a couple hours a day. But it's just not a good situation when buildings are...
And in summary, really, other than the winter cheer team, we don't foresee any needed use for the building, from the school perspective.
Okay, well, that's helpful. How many days a week is it being used? Do you foresee it being used now in the wintertime if it's still open?
Five or six. Sometimes I think we had some Saturday practices in there as well, and then practice after school most school days.
I have a couple of questions, but I'll open to anybody else have thoughts or questions.
Yes, so I think, because I've been in the North Street School, you know, over the last couple of months and seen, you know, some of the things, Mr. Libby, that you've described, you know, with, you know, and it's areas that are sectioned off, you know. It's not like, you know, we have people wandering around the building or anything like that. None of that's occurring to my knowledge from what I've seen. So just from driving by in the neighborhood or whatnot, so I know that there are, you know, outside of the school's purview, you know, police, the police department is using it for various activities, for trainings, things of that nature. Obviously, our high school cheer teams are, you know, some recreational overflow with youth levels. I guess my question is, at least for the recreational overflow in the high school cheer team, because it is, you know, essentially our students at the end of the day, is there a place for them to go and to relocate? And not only that, but to store the equipment that they're using in the current buildings that we are actively maintaining?
I'm looking at getting a, seeing if we can store with a hoist system at the Center Elementary School. Up in the gym rafters, we've had those hoist systems for wrestling mats. And they, with a button, lower it down, do the business, hoist it back up, and it's out of the way. And the new cheering mats, they're very cumbersome, take up a lot of space, but they are very light. So we don't think it's a structural issue that they wouldn't be able to handle the weight of a proposal like that. I got John Marshan working on getting our gym fixture guy to come out and assess whether that's a possibility for the Center School.
So would it be two, I'm sorry, would it be two sets of hoist systems then?
Whatever, whatever, whatever we need. Space and make the whole situation work.
Would there be any concerns with the floor? Where the floors had issues with humidity, I think, as I understand it, there was more of a humidity-based...
Yeah, I don't...
Issue.
We seem to be having better luck with that this year. We didn't, we're not seeing the spacing, the gaps that we saw last year developing in between the boards. So, you know, we're hoping that they're not going to dry out as much as they did last year. That's what we were told would happen over time, that the floor would acclimate itself to the conditions of the building and that the cupping and the changing of the boards becomes less and less year over year. So if the experts that we've been listening to are correct, that's what we're seeing anyway to this point. So hoping that it's not as much of a factor. And then by nature, by virtue of that answer, that the storing of the mats and using the mats wouldn't have an impact on the floor.
And do you foresee the programs wanting to use the building through the winter? Is this something that you're planning for, or...
The need for the winter use is like right after school. That's when our winter teams practice. The need in the fall with the youth groups was, well, there's two groups. Our high school program right after school, and then the youth groups in the evening. So, you know, and it's also a bigger gym space than, say, the Ryan over the wind. So, you know, and there's a curtain, so it's something we could think about sharing if we need to do that.
It's always a juggling act, balancing time in all of our gyms and...
And I think...
Because we do have an alphabet after-school program. We have to make sure they have, they need some run-around time for those indoors after school.
So the one thing to consider, especially with the high school, if it's the Center School, let's assume for a second, the high school gets out at 2:00. The Center School doesn't get out till 3:05. And traffic isn't done there till 3:20, 3:25 maybe. So how are high school girls, in this particular example anyway, going to be getting to their, you know, required practice time an hour and 20 minutes after their school day is complete?
I have a question.
Can I get that question answered first, though?
Sorry. I thought that was like a hypothetical.
No, no, no.
How does football do it today? Because they go use that space, right, for practice?
Yeah, some of the teams have to...
I mean, I think Mr. Druin, it's not to answer for anybody, but I, I mean, they share one field for field hockey, boys and girls, soccer.
No, no, I understand, but the school day is still happening. The school day isn't happening in that scenario.
Yeah, it's tough in the winter, too, because everything's indoors. So that's where it really gets hard to squeeze everybody in at exactly the same time they all get out of school. So, I mean, I think you're right. Mr. Druin does the best job at maintaining balance and who's where, but, yeah. I mean, the key here are the mats. So this is for cheerleading, at least. The key is how we manage the mats and space.
Where they, where we don't have an answer on the hoisting system yet, which I know you're looking into, obviously. And I don't, I mean, our next town meeting is, what, the first week of May sometime? I'm not sure of the date. So I don't, like, I know we put this on the agenda because we said at one point a few months back, we should reevaluate it after the fall season was over, which I think was now, essentially. So I, I mean, we don't, I think we have until, what, January, maybe early February before it has to go into the warrant for town meeting. So that, I think, would certainly give us... So, that, I think, would certainly give us enough time to have the answers from, you know, Mr. Marshon about whatever the potential solution may be.
Yep.
There's a space in the gym, a gym inside the gym, that, like a fitness area.
Yes.
What is that space used for? Because there's a gym in that new football town, house thing that's out there.
Fieldhouse, yeah.
The fieldhouse, thank you. So, there's a gym there, there's a gym here. Can we use that room better?
I don't know that it's big enough.
Utilize that space?
Yeah, it isn't big enough for...
Good question, though.
What is that space being used for, then?
It's, it's part of the exercise room. Originally, it was built as a dance room, but then some of that space was encroached on for more exercise equipment. So, the majority of that area is for, is exercise.
I believe they use it for fitness, either for phys ed during the day, and then fitness equipment for the athletic teams who are at this complex, like track or soccer.
Redundancy to have two gyms, two spaces like that.
Ooh, there's a lot of students after school needing both, true. That, it, it does, but they, yeah.
Big facility over at the Ryan Complex there. I feel that space could be used much better than having...
It's part of PE, though, too, you know, it's, yeah.
I think the bigger issue is neither of the mats. A wrestling mat doesn't fit in there, and then the chairleading mat doesn't fit in there, and you don't have the extra sort of space if somebody tumbles off the mat.
Safety issue, yeah.
See, I'm talking about more for storage places versus, like, is it the doors that don't allow it to get in? Is a door cheaper to build out to put space there versus a hoisting system at a brand-new school where we're talking about time and traffic and all of that stuff? I just...
Yeah.
Yeah. But we can't keep holding on to a school because we can't figure out a mat solution. We just have to figure out the mat solution and...
Right.
No, I think that was just a, I think, kind of a conversation of better understanding. But, in terms of the school, I personally am comfortable with us revisiting this as, if there's no expressed interest by the district to use the building, I think we should make a plan for this to go to town meeting. You know, we'll work with Mr. Montori about sorting through some of those details, as we did last time. But I, I feel kind of strongly that if there's a lot of funding, a significant amount of funding, that might be going into this building, whether it be to maintain it in a better or different way, I think we need to, I would, I would like to understand that better so that we're not putting a lot of money into that building, if it's being used for such a limited purpose.
Right.
Is there any use for the land, not necessarily the building, but the land by the school? Because if we put this in town meeting, this is to give that whole parcel back, right?
The whole parcel.
Yeah. Okay.
I think, again, that would go back to the town and the decision-making, and especially the recommendations that were made by the committee would be taken into consideration. The committee meaning the...
Reuse committee.
Reuse committee, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it certainly made sense in the fall, that, you know, it was, it was a situation that wasn't sorted out yet, but, yeah, I mean, if it's just, you'd have to go in and fix these leaks anyway, but if the heat didn't have to be on, you wouldn't have the leaks from the heat, things like that. So, I think, from my perspective, I, I would vote in the affirmative to not maintain the building if it was, you know, causing a lot of extras time for staff and finances. So, if you find that it's in that situation, if you could come back to us with that, that would be helpful.
We're agreeing to table this for at least another couple of months while we sort out.
Next month might be better.
Sorry?
Yeah, my proposal would be, I would entertain a motion to revisit this for a formal vote in February, but in the meantime, between now and February, if for some reason, you know, it's cost prohibitive that, that, you know, we weigh that, and the importance of keeping the building open versus the cost.
Yeah, can we just, the only thing, Madam Chair, that I would just add to that is, let's just make sure that we, our dates are right, because if February's too late to get into the warrant, I just want to make sure in January.
And I'll put it on the January agenda, but I, I think we should be okay with that. If we're not, then we'll talk about it in January.
And we can certainly discuss with the town manager, even a placeholder, you know, on the warrant, and should that date be a little bit before the February meeting?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, either way, we really need to find a permanent home for chairleading.
Yes.
Regardless of...
Yeah.
What we're doing with the North Street.
Thank you for entertaining the questions, anyway. And, yeah, the feedback, so, all right, we'll revisit this again in a few months.
Okay.
All right, and new school committee matters of interest. Is there anything anybody would like to?
Point of order, just can we go back to the new business, the 18B?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Professional Development Day, I don't know if there's anything else.
Mrs. McDermott, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I already went over a little bit of it with you. You have in your packet the October 18 schedule. So, you can see, we offered a pretty differentiated approach, depending upon the grade level. I mentioned all of the different standard space grading workshops we had. We also had Dibbles workshops for the teachers at the Ryan and the Wynn, that's new to them. So, they were introduced to, to what, what the universal screener does and how they can use the data. And that was with our literacy coach, Kelly Cracchiolo, in collaboration with the building principals. And then at TMHS, they had building-based PD around Vision of a Learner that was very well-received. Teachers are, are enjoying being in their own buildings on those, on those workshop days. And then you can see, for some of the other groups, we had lots of different things going on, continuing our partnership with MGH. We had some inclusive practices and service delivery for some of our related service providers. So, lots happening. We have also recently had the November 7th PD, and that was a full day. The pre-K to 6 ELA teachers, so all the classroom teachers and the 5-6 ELA teachers, worked on the Frog Street and EL education implementation, so continuing to support those, those efforts in launching that new curriculum. And then, all non-ELA teachers, 5 through 12, were here at the high school with Kale Burke, he was here in person, where we focused on our Vision of a Learner attributes, collaborative learner, creative problem solver, and effective communicator, and how those attributes will become observable in our classrooms and through our lessons. So, what was nice is we had a nice mix of whole group, school group, and some cross-school group sharing, which was, in the feedback, certainly one of the highlights, that teachers really enjoyed, being able to, the time to collaborate in not only their school groups, but to also meet with teachers outside of their schools. It's great. And we have, not to get too far ahead of myself, but November 7th is already over, and we are already looking at the December 1st workshop day coming up, which, again, will be devoted to standards-based report cards for our K4, and then we've got some Vision of a Learner continuation in the building, at the building level. So, lots happening.
Great, thank you. Any questions, comments? No. Thank you for sharing this, I appreciate seeing how things are differentiated a little bit.
Yeah.
It's helpful to see it and kind of better understand.
Yeah, it's a challenge. It's definitely what, I mean, teachers are asking for more and more differentiation, and so usually when we get the feedback, that's, it's pretty clear. So, we're trying, definitely trying.
Thank you. Okay, so now, I will move on to school committee matters of interest. Anyone want to start?
It's probably going to sound pretty redundant, you know, it would be worthwhile just to see what we got out of the conference.
Yeah.
Yeah, that works. First off, thank you for the town for allowing us all to go. It was affirming to see what we already do and informative to see what we might not be doing. It was great to learn about other districts' literacy programs, how some other districts might develop inclusion and belonging in their schools, and then presentations and guidance on just being a more effective committee member in general. It's a very useful conference, I took a lot from it. It's all I have, though.
Great. Mr. Russo?
Yeah, no, I would just share the same sentiment as my colleague, Mr. Parsons. I guess I would just maybe thank the committee for allowing me to act as your delegate during the conference as well. That was, you know, a rather interesting meeting, where I think a lot of, you know, it was good to, as, as all these individual school committees come together, you know, with a delegate representing each of them, and really try and, you know, talk about real things that are ongoing in our state, and the things that, you know, we would like to see MASC pursuing with our state legislators. On our behalf, of course, is, is, you know, a worthwhile experience, for sure. And I'd just also like to extend, you know, good luck, and, you know, to our high school football team, as well as our drama theater students with the High School Musical. So, I'll be attending both of those this weekend, so I'm looking forward to both.
Great. Okay, Mrs. Anderson?
Just to share the same sentiment, this was my first MASC conference, and I took a lot away from it, mostly just the collaboration that we were, that we had together, too. Some of us went to the same different tracks and kind of talked about how we could, we could do different things in our district. And then, I did attend the trunk-or-treat event, which, due to rain, that always happens every weekend, they had to combine the center and the doing pack. So, I think there was, I mean, the amount of kids there, the weather was perfect, the kids were in and out, they, they all loved it. Some of the teachers even made some trunks, which was really exciting for them to see. So, it was a great event. And then I really do appreciate the 8th grade move-up day. My son, being in 8th grade, took a part in it. I have not seen him yet today, so I haven't gotten his feedback, but just the time and care that the staff and the students put into this day to make it really helpful for the 8th graders to see what the high school offers is really important, so thank you for that. And then I'm also very excited for High School Musical. I have my tickets for Friday, so I'm really excited to go there. And then also, a huge, good luck to the, the football team. It's been, the past couple of Friday nights have been really good, family fun time at the stadium, so I'm excited to see them in their next game.
Great. Ms. Bea Johnny Smith?
Yeah, so it's a lot of reiterating the same, some my second time at the conference. I went in with a different approach this time, with more of a look ahead and try to have like a holistic approach to how I went to pick sessions and whatnot. I went to a lot of sessions on special needs, special ed, IEP, and diversifying and, and expanding our district's ability to reevaluate what belonging really means. And then, I did go to the Unified Basketball Game a couple of weeks ago. That might be my favorite event I've ever attended, ever. Sorry for football, but I...
No, no.
... because I love the place, too, but there were so many people there. I've never seen the stands at the Ryan so packed, the cheerleaders, it was senior night, it was just such a fun night. I would encourage everybody to go to one of those basketball games, it was awesome. It was just really special to be there.
Speaking of belonging.
Yes, exactly. And then, going last is probably awful for you, because we say a lot of the same things, but Bridgette and I attended the Doing Playground and Communication Board ribbon cutting. It was freezing cold, but it did not stop the teeny-tiny little preschool kids from running out there and playing. That playground is awesome for them, so exciting. That communication board is great, such a wonderful addition to the school and the community. And then the last thing is, I wanted to thank the, the Wynn, and I think the high school staff who took the students on the Frozen field trip in Boston. Theater district went and saw Frozen. It was my first time sending my child on a bus at night to an event. It was so organized, it was so well-run, they were, everything was very specific with when they were going to get there, they were going to get a time to call parents, it was just really, really great. It was a nice way to tiptoe into that, letting them do things as a, you know, as a 7th grader. But I wanted to commend our staff that were there, that made sure that that was super smooth. Great job, so, thank you.
Mr. Dupree, that does a nice job.
Fantastic.
So, yeah, I don't have a lot of different things to add, other than, I have to 100% agree with you, Mrs. Terry Regan, on the conference being just a higher level this year. Some of my most favorite things that I attended, the MCAS presentation was actually a gentleman from Department of Education who works, you know, in the office, looking at numbers, data guy, super informed, talking about just some of the changes that we could anticipate. That was great. I really enjoyed the session that I attended on the school, district-based daycare options for staff. I couldn't even tell you, I left like wanting to break ground. It just was awesome. So, yeah, there were a lot of great things that I took away, and just like you're saying, Mr. Parsons, it was affirmative in so many ways, too, to hear, you know, some other people kind of chatting about things and saying, I think we're doing okay, you know, in a lot of ways. So, it just, it had a nice balance of making you want a little bit more for Tewksbury, but being really proud of what's here already. So, that was pretty great. Yeah, yeah, and thank you, Mr. Russo, for representing us.
Welcome.
As a delegate, I know you put in some work there. But I do think that this professional development for us as a committee was very important, and I think it's, it's great work. I appreciate the community for supporting us in attending it, and it just, it just helps us be better at what we're supposed to be doing here, so, yeah. And that said, again, DECA was phenomenal last night. Looking forward to the play. Good luck to the, to the football team. My daughter has had the opportunity to play in the Unified, so it's great to be there as a, as a person, but I think it's also great to see our kids jumping in on that stuff, too. So, yeah, a lot of good stuff going on, and I look forward to...
Can I add one thing?
Yeah, go ahead.
It may not be obvious, or maybe it is obvious, but all of us went, all of us went to the MASC conference, and that wasn't true about a lot of districts. And I think it was a really nice thing to show, to show people that we were all there together, we sat together, we went to, you know, we might have separated and went off and, and learned about different things, or brought back different things, but I think it was a really nice projection of our district and our commitment to our, our district, so...
I agree, that's a great point. Thank you.
Yeah.
For pointing it out. So, future school committing dates, we have December 6th, we'll have a regular meeting. December 10th, we're also going to have a regular meeting, and then on January 24th, our budget workshop will actually be separate from our January meeting. February 14th, we are also looking to a regular meeting. Future Subcommittee Advisory Dates, CPAC, as you had mentioned, is on the 30th of November, not the 16th. Wellness Advisory is December 6th, and Policy Subcommittee, we have not set a date yet. As you can see, the amount of policies that we've been kind of plowing through, we, I think we all just took like a minute. I don't know what'll happen over the holidays, but, you know, definitely we have enough on our agenda and on our plate, and we've got a lot of things in the pipeline that we're just researching on the back end, so, I don't know. We'll let you know when our next one is.
Okay.
Any future agenda items that anybody would like to propose? Okay, and then, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second. So, a motion by Mr. Russo, second by Mrs. Bea Johnny Smith, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And, meeting adjourns at 8:29 PM.